Okay, so we're gonna continue on. Mr. Manager, next up, Communication, Business License Denied.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Part of city ordinance is to notify you that if a business license has been denied, that notification is that there was a marijuana, medical marijuana cultivation facility. The reason for denial was regarding the ordinance as it pertains to a thousand-foot buffer within businesses. It's a building that had been used but then had gone vacant. So the grandfather of that building has no longer care. So that's why that business was denied. That's it. That's just communication pertaining to ordinance.
Okay, very good. Next, Aquatic Center in Auburn, Maine. Let me start off with saying we do not have one. And hence why this part of the communication is happening tonight. I'm just gonna read off a prepared statement. For the most part, the no point is up to you all. The lack of aquatic facilities is actually a national and local public health emergency. It's been written about in national publications just recently. There's only been one, excuse me, no municipal pools have been built in the state of Maine in the past forty-five years. So it is absolutely becoming an acute issue. And the split between those who have and have not with regards to aquatic safety is growing, and it's growing on socioeconomic lines. The leading cause of death right now for all children between the ages of zero and four is drowning. The second leading cause of deaths for those between five and nine is drowning. We in our own local community have actually experienced this. When I first became mayor, we unfortunately lost a young child in the Andes Goggin River. Since then, another young boy from Lewiston drowned unfortunately at Rank Pond State Park. And just recently, several months ago, there was, I believe, this two-year-old in Auburn passed away in a backyard swimming pool. So aquatic safety is a public safety crisis at this point. And we're not starting here from scratch. And I want to make that very clear. In fact, Auburn has been studying this issue for several years. This city council has as well, going back to looking at Lake Grove Park as an alternate source of swimming and hence being able to teach water safety. That didn't work, but we have pivoted well there. And we do have a lot of great outdoor activities and recreation happening on that body of water. Drive by and there's canoes everywhere, all the time. It's exciting, but also reinforces a need for good water safety in our community. We looked at an add-on to the high school when the high school was being proposed. That did not work for a number of different reasons. We've also looked at partnering with other nonprofits. COVID-19 really derailed some of those efforts. So what we'd like to do is bring this back. But the most important and the largest step up to this point was when city staff commissioned a feasibility study in 2021 to discuss an aquatic center. I'm gonna ask the manager to forward you that, all of you on the school committee, or excuse me, city council, that school committee meeting last week. On the city council, that feasibility study, it talks about the need within not just Auburn, but Andes Goggin, Oxford Franklin County, talks about the competitive nature on this. And not only does it satisfy a public health need, but it also helps us get closer to our goal, which was established in 2019 of being a sports tourism destination. So it'll absolutely help round us out. So with all this said, this feasibility study is good. It is a huge step. It's been paid for. It initially was commissioned to be part of the PAL complex, which you heard about earlier today. But just the, as we saw, the topography, the geology of that area does not lend itself to having an aquatic facility right there. But it's time to dust that off and look at this. So next steps, what I'd like to do is on our next, our August seventeenth meeting, I believe, our next August meeting, we'll have an order on the agenda that will direct staff to actually look at the feasibility study and produce back to us three key points. Cost, sources of cost, potential location, and potential partnerships with either for-profit or not-for-profit or other municipalities. So those three key things. We'll get you the order language and really leave it up to the city manager and his staff to take the feasibility study and kind of move it to the next step. And I'd encourage you all to read that feasibility study because this isn't our parents or grandparents municipal pool. Yeah, there's a lot of different options, a lot of different needs. But the great thing about aquatics is that it actually can satisfy needs for every single person in your community, regardless of physical ability, age, or socioeconomic background. So aquatics is one of those great equalizers. And if we don't do something, it will be the aquatic safety and competency. It will be the sole purview of those who can afford it, those who actually have the backyard pool or live on a lake or a pond. So this is completely about making our city open and the ability to actually give everyone the same opportunities within our city. So look at that. And if there are any questions about this or how kind of this came forth, please ask me now.
I'll just jump in and say, you know, I served for many years on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board as chair. And we heard several people throughout that time come to, come to the meeting and ask for this type of facility. I sat on the school committee meeting for the, for the new facilities there. And that was something that we had lots of people ask for. I think this is, there's a very big need for this in this community, and I really support this exploratory project.
Anybody else? Sorry. Or Counselor Hollis, Counselor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too support the concept of looking into this about having this place to go swimming. And I'm encouraged that we are, that you brought this forward tonight. And I look forward to it to meet ADA compliance. So anybody, no matter their ability, can be able to get into the water. I wish I could have had more access to water because I cannot swim.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay, very good.
And I would say, my kids grew up in the Auburn School Department when the Y bus would go around to the elementary schools and pick kids up on Fridays. And I picked my kids up many, many days over on Fridays at the, at the Y pool right over here, and it's closed. So there is no option for kids to, to learn to swim. And that was something, it was open to everybody. And so I would like to see us, I would like to see us seriously look at this.
Yeah, I'm totally in support of investigating the viability of a project like this. A parent of a young child, swim lessons are really hard to find. We used to take advantage of the Y at Pine Land Farms, but they closed their pool. No longer offered swimming lessons. Fortunately, we have access to water, but being the parent of a young child, making sure that they're safe around water is paramount. I also think it checks a lot of boxes just for access. I think there's a lot of possible benefits to our senior citizens community in being able to do some therapy. So I'm very interested and supportive of looking into this.
Yeah, well, just a couple of quick notes. We do have sources of funds that are available and might be available. And we'll let the manager really research that and talk about that over the next couple of weeks. One of those could be ARPA monies that we do have left over. This is an allowable usage. But in that, I want you all, if you could, pay very particular attention to the mapping of aquatic facilities within the state. And this first became clear when I was Rita, myself, Brian Wood, a couple of other folks, we took a trip up to Waterville and really saw one of the greatest examples of aquatic facilities in the state. Learned about their sources of income. What they did, services provided is wonderful. And that is an anomaly because if you look at that map of where aquatic facilities are, there are only a handful of aquatic facilities outside of about a ten-mile swath of coastal Maine. So that divides happening. And for someone who's, for an area surrounded by lakes and rivers with a pretty substantial population and growing, that's something that's important. So I think this council has a track record of executing and executing very effectively, as we just saw. So I'm looking forward to seeing this being executed. So if that's it, then we'll move on to the next point. Okay, next communication item is, well, me, naming of city facilities and infrastructure. Okay. It's become very clear in Auburn, and again, I think a little bit of this is cleanup. Back in 2019, when we were celebrating our Seska Centennial, the Seska Centennial Committee, we looked at how do we honor our history? You know, while preserving our legacies and moving Auburn forward, of course. One of the topics was updating and looking at naming, right? Not naming rights, but naming things after legacies or individuals or groups. We started doing that. Anniversary Park was a wonderful example. That matched up with a complete rehabilitation of that area. But there's still a lot left to be done. So what I'm doing right now is I'm forming a mayor's ad hoc committee, very short in duration, approximately forty-five days. I've asked Counselor Rick Whiting and Counselor Joe Moran to be on that committee. And I'm gonna ask the city manager to delegate or appoint any staff as he sees fit for this. Mission's gonna be a couple fold. One is we're gonna review the policies for naming of facilities, parks, roads through this ad hoc committee. And we're gonna also follow the policy of opening up nominations from the public to have us look at, present, correlate, see if it's appropriate, and then bring back for final action to this body. So we will follow the policy that's already, well, predates all of us here, actually, and really hopefully get some great feedback from the community. Because there are a lot of people from this community that frankly probably deserve to be honored. And I'll say this right now, out of our history and of all the people who have lived here over the course of the last hundred and fifty-four years, correct me if I'm wrong, we have no facility named after any females contributed to the city. And that's something that I think is an absolute crime and probably needs to be reversed. So reflecting our city and the demographics are important. Honoring our history and moving forward is critical. So thank you, Counselor Moran and Counselor Whiting. We'll get together and come up with some dates. Of course, there are gonna be open meetings. Anybody can attend and add in. So any questions on that? I know nothing can be named after anyone that's sitting in this body right now. Counselor Moran, Park, okay. Nothing else? Perfect. Thank you all for that. Go to Council Communications, About, and to the community. Start off from the right and just work your way down, please.
It's come to my attention that when we were presented the school budget and that they had made cuts, it wasn't mentioned that they were cutting funding for sports and things that their high school kids were looking forward to.
If I could, as you know, thank you. I was gonna talk about that in reports, but I'll answer that now. All the sports that were cut were publicly talked about over three different meetings. There was justification, and in certain cases, accommodations were made. Most recently, there's been a lot of, very recently, conversation about freshman football. That was open. That was presented. Everybody knew about it. There were safety issues involved, participation numbers involved. It wasn't necessarily about a budget. It was very, very, a minute line item. Had nothing to do with that, actually. Any of the sports that were consolidated with another school, cross-country skiing, for example, they're all communicated openly. It had nothing to do with money. I will say though, since those decisions were made, the population of kids that are interested in freshman football has significantly increased. Part of that is some of the work that we've done at the city side by taking middle school football away from the rec department and moving that back into the school department, that has significantly increased participation rates. So we have a finance committee meeting this week. I'm the chair of that. We're gonna be looking on how we take the funds that they've raised on their own, if we have any additional funds, and the feasibility adding that back into the program.
So point of information, you on the school level have been discussing what were supposedly cut?
Oh, no, we did. Every specific program.
Right. In other words, the city council, we weren't informed when they were talking about cuts exactly what was cut?
I'm not, very well, possibly, I mean, when it comes, if you remember protocol and through our charter, when the school budget comes up to the council, we look at it, but we don't make any recommendations or line item recommendations. It's either yes or a no vote. And then it goes off to vote. So and I honestly, I'm not sure if that was brought up or not.
I can address that. I recall in a workshop hearing about the Nordic skiing and a little distressed, but I think there was a lack of participation. It just wasn't the interest level. So they just made the determination to cut.
Actually, in that case, they moved the students to the Turner Program. And they're much happier there. They have a better facility and so forth. So we were always accommodating to any child who's, and there's only a couple of sports that were moved or cut or eliminated. And it was all based upon enrollment and participation numbers.
Because the parents that have contacted me saying that, like, this is the punch list for three home games for the official, depending on their travel costs, it's like $900. Three away games, charter bus costs, depending on the distance, about $4,500. Coaching stifens $5,282. So they're looking at a proposed cut that they would like to find, see if the city could find a way to come up with $10,682. They have been trying to do fundraising, but it may not be quick enough and in time to be able to allow these junior football team players to be able to do what they love to do.
Well, Counselor Gary, without entering into debate, it's not about the money. This is about the number of students, the safety of the students. If there's not enough students on a football team on full contact, and they don't have proper rest in between plays, quarters, and so forth, that could be, that has, that's just another variable to be taken into consideration.
In my experience, and I've coached high school football, and I played all the way through high school, coached college basketball. There are, and, and, and public schools, football is a fluctuating sport. And if you don't have enough, you, you can only play so many quarters per week. You're only allowed to play so many quarters. So what happens if you don't have, you might have a lot of freshmen, but not very many sophomores, and a lot of juniors and not very many seniors. And what happens is they take kids from different age groups and put them on different teams. So what is maybe happening, and what I've seen in the past, is you make a freshman sophomore team. And you might take some of those sophomores and have them play varsity. And you might take a junior or some of the juniors and have them play on that freshman sophomore team. But you segregate to different teams. And instead of having freshman, JV, and varsity, you'd have a freshman sophomore and a junior senior team that plays the varsity. And then the next year, you reevaluate. You might have a different, but it depends on the team. It's not as cut and dry as, oh, if we get the parents together and we get all these freshmen together, and then they go, it doesn't, because you might only have eight sophomores. And then what do they do? And so you have to limit how many quarters in a week that a kid is allowed to play. And so that's.
I will tell the city council and this whole city, we will do and make every decision that's in best interest of the health and safety of the students while also acknowledging their desires to play. Okay? So we will, you know, no kid will be left behind when it comes down to sports. We've added a wrestling program just a month and a half ago because demand was there. And there is a process, and we're gonna follow it. And of course, I would have all, anybody who reaches out to you on this, show up, call a school committee member, okay, and, and just pay attention to the process. So. And this is all done publicly, by the way, back in April, March, April, May, many, many conversations. So it's important to stay involved in municipal government.
And I would, I would encourage the parents of those football players that it's important to be engaged, you know, get booster programs and be engaged with the staff. And it is important for them to be involved because there's a lot of kids on football teams. And they, you do need, as parents, need to be involved. But it can't be just about playing time, which it tends to be, so.
Next communication, please.
Happy to report there's a baby loon in Lake Auburn. Seen the parents for several years, but it's baby loon. I've seen it about four times. So it seems to be doing well. And also happy to report that the main mill has received a $500,000 grant from the main office of tourism. So that will help in their fundraising for the new, new facility.
Yeah, I'd just like to let everyone know that tomorrow night at 5:30, we have an age-friendly committee meeting. And you're welcome to come and attend and listen to one of our speakers that we have come in, Jonathan Labonte, to talk about AARP and some future things for the city of Auburn. So please, if you got time, come on down to Pen Gill Park, to the Senior Community Center. And I think you'll enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank city staff. A couple of weeks back, we had a series of storms, and there was a lot of damage done to the city. They really got together and made some really substantial improvements in a short amount of time. And I'm sure the city manager will, will touch on this as well, but thank you very much. Also want to thank city staff for the tremendous job they did during the president's visit to Auburn, especially the airport director, as well as the, the police department. Thank you so much. It was a great visit and a great day for Auburn.
I'll turn over the manager to go, but there are a couple more things I forgot to say. And I'm gonna echo Counselor Staples said. I was, I was at the, I was at the Lewiston Auburn Airport, Auburn Lewiston Airport, excuse me, waiting for the president to arrive. I talked a lot with Mr. Labonte and Public Works leading up to the event. The amount of work, the amount of security, the amount of organization seen at the airport throughout the city and at Auburn Manufacturing is amazing. I'm sure it's career-defining. And whereas it was an unbelievable honor to host the president, I hope we don't have another presidential visit for at least a good, maybe a hundred years. That was a lot. So again, just on behalf of the entire city council and city of Auburn, thank you, Mr. Labontes. Our chiefs are just here. But thank you all for doing what you did. It was greatly appreciated. So next, we do have, so with that done, the John Jenkins Award. I just want to let everybody know that available online tonight, this is an award that I started three years ago, when the mayor chooses someone, and in this time, I'm soliciting nominations from everybody in the city of Auburn. So you can see the nomination form on the city. Just remember this, this is the hands-in-heart Leadership and Service Award. It's a distinguished community service award. It's named after John Jenkins, who was a good friend and a former mayor, passed away in 2020. So when you're looking at nominations, all this is on the website, but please keep in mind, someone who has significant and meaningful service to the community, exceptional commitment to volunteerism, unselfish to leadership and collaboration, creativity, cooperation, and hard work and service to others, is an inspiration to others, is a role model, especially youth, and is an exemplary leader in civic activities. We've had two great award winners, one being Deputy Chief Feifield, as well as Travis, Travis Barneys, excuse me, Coach Adams, Coach Adams. Everybody plays basketball, blends together after a while. Yeah. But Coach Adams and Travis is a police officer. Too many Barneys. But Coach Adams, remember, little basketball coach, was the last recipient. So again, please, if you all have time and have someone in mind, go to auburnmain.gov. You'll see it right on the homepage. I would love to have some nominees from the community on that. And that is it for my communications. Mr. Manager?
Thanks, Mayor, Council. I know we have an agenda to get to, but I do wanna just provide a few updates. One to echo what, what has been said regarding the presidential visit. Nothing but just amazing accolades from the president's team, that their front team, the one that comes and they get things set up. Just the feedback was just that our staff was on point. Our entire team collaborated from fire, police, both of our public safety, rather, and then also within the airport, as was mentioned, just, and then our other staff, our support staff that, that comes alongside to make sure everything is done. But we couldn't have asked for a better, better showing of Auburn. The team here and the citizens that came out to welcome the president and, and the governor as they came. And, and what a great, great business to come and highlight with Auburn Manufacturing. Catherine Leonard there has done amazing things over these years. And the fact that she's part of Auburn is really essential and a great testimony, testimony to the hard-working folks in Auburn that work in these, these facilities. So our team did an exceptional job. The, and on top of that, we were also dealing with after the storm. So as was mentioned regarding just, just a damage and restoration report. Counsel, I know you've received this already. However, you know, when, when five inches of water falls in the downtown area, the work that this council and previous councils have done with infrastructure was essential for us to be able to handle what took place during the storm. Your stormwater separation that you have been working on and previous councils have worked on is why that work was underway. For, for folks that don't know, this, all that used to pour into one pipe, all that went to the sewer system. And when that sewer system hits its peak, it opens up and goes through the river. So the fact that we were able to do all that work ahead of time to ensure that that water was going through our stormwater rather than our sewer system was essential. Now, this is also one of those hundred-year-type storm activities. We can't build a, you know, a stormwater system that can handle the volume, but it did a great job. We had, we had immediate flooding, and then we had the waters were able to, to be able to, to run off into the, to the river and other areas. But that was just an essential infrastructure that was done by the city over the years. That doesn't mean that there weren't a lot of businesses impacted. You know, I spoke with the manager at Gritty's. You know, Gritty's had to put a new floor in. They had other damage down in their basement. There was a lot of, a lot of businesses that, that were impacted. If you saw in the paper recently regarding Court Street Baptist Church here, they, they've had to close their doors temporarily because of the damage that's done there. You know, it's six feet of water, as I was talking with someone this week. Six feet of water that they had in their basement. Those are huge impacts for any, any building. But our team, we had a lot of damage throughout the city. Our team just did an exceptional job, jumping on that, getting it done. Again, when I was talking with the manager at Gritty's, just talked about how impressive it was that the next day, Public Works staff were on Mill Street, getting Mill Street repaired. You know, I know many people saw these images, but you know, a sinkhole that opened up on Minded Avenue pretty much took a vehicle in that sinkhole. Team was able to get that filled and ensure public safety moving forward. You know, when you start taking a look, this is the River Walk. You know, this is supposed to be a walkway here, and it's part of the river. It looked like another stream had opened up. And then, and here's just another look at what's, what it's doing to the pavement down there. The, here's another picture of the River Walk here. So our team is out doing the work that needs to be done. We prioritize the work. We take a look at what's essential to make sure public access, Mill Street was essential. We have a lot of housing at, at the rope block. We needed to get that road back open. We have medical personnel that have to get into that building. We needed to make sure that took place. The team was out that more, actually, that night, certain things were starting, as I was doing in the assessment that evening, going through and taking a look at our downtown. Our team was already out getting things prepped for the team to come in the next morning to start working on that. And, and this is just behind the rope block on Miller, Miller Alley. But this is the road I was talking about. So, and that's just this storm. As was mentioned during our public safety meeting, when you have this much water pouring out over that wall, coming into the parking garage, that becomes a challenge for us. All the vehicles parked down there, we had to move them to a higher level. Those vehicles, it was, it was getting close to going above the tires on those cars. And so just happened that, you know, Chief Moen was leaving around this time of when this happened. He was able to bring another crew in and start getting all this taken care of, and then leave that crew here to help with all the road blocking and, and other issues that we saw. And then we had a second event on the. And then we had a second event on the 29th. This is Jordan School Road. You know, that was, this is a big project to try to open that road up. Fortunately, it's a road that we could, we could detour traffic and be able to do that, but still, it was essential to get that road back up and open. Here's a, here's a photo of what it looked like behind, behind our, one of our ballfields down at Hasty. You know, our drainage isn't designed to handle this. So, you know, it eventually will get there. Like I said, these were extreme storms, but, but that became obviously a challenge. So incredible response from our crew. The Lewiston Auburn 911 Communication Center reported that their team processed 420 calls in a six-hour period on July 27th. This is a team that's already short-staffed. This is a team that was able to handle that volume of calls, push that out to the appropriate departments. 281 non-emergency phone line calls, 139 911 calls. They prioritized those calls. They responded as appropriate. During the storm event on the 29th, we had 120 call, non-emergency calls, and 72 911 calls during that, that event. So this is heavy lift on our public safety. Even though we're talking about public infrastructure damage, it was a lot of homes that had damage. Our fire department responds to a lot of that. We do, we help with assessment, we help with the water that's there, we make sure that it's a safe, safe building after some of that damage. So the team did a great job. We had a list of 76 reported damaged locations that the team had to go and respond to in one way or another. And we work closely with the state. We are collecting all the data and costs. We'll be providing a report to Anderson Skoggan Emergency Management. I am hopeful that we will have, will reach that countywide, the number that's needed for federal assistance. So we'll be working through, through that and taking a look at it. This is just the heat map of where those calls were, and I'm sorry, of where the damage was. So you can see on here, you know, most, everything was targeted in our downtown, but we had a few, few spots as well. So, so, yeah, I mean, we have hills that come down into this downtown area, and that was part of the challenge. The other update that I have for you is the mailing that you had requested that we do. We sent out 11,386 household letters. These went to every door, direct mail. So whether it's a renter or an occupant, everyone received this. You talked about putting a QR code on the letter. So we had a QR code included in the letter. It had been scanned 50 times. Someone had seen that, scanned it to get more information. We also had individuals that called regarding programming that was listed on there. They applied for some of that programming, so some of that was a good outreach. Total cost for the printing plus postage, to do something like that, just so you know in the future, it's $5,500 to do a full letter like this. When we do just a postcard, it's around $800. But that was, that was the total cost. I just wanted to provide you that update. Maybe the last thing. Yes, last thing, National Night Out. I don't think anyone mentioned National Night Out. So Thursday, August 10th, at 5:30 to dusk on Main Street at Festival Plaza, National Night Out will be held. There'll be chewed hoops with our local basketball legend, Troy Barney's. We'll have police vehicles and equipments, activities giveaway. We always serve hot dogs, popcorn. We'll also have a live music by the L.A. Harley Band. It's been a great sponsor of this project over the years. This is our 19th annual National Night Out, and you can also come and meet. K-9 Brick will be there. Brick is named after a fallen officer, which is Norm Philbrick, who passed during, in the line of duty. Brick was named after him. So that's the update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. We're going to open this up to the first open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, just please step up to the podium, give us your name and address. Let me hear comments in three minutes. Okay, no one? No one? Okay, we're going to close the first open session. We're going to go to new business. Order 104-0807-2023, approving the mass gathering application for the Auburn Blues and Brews Event to be held on Saturday, September 9th, 2023. This is a public hearing and vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Walker, second from Councilor Moore. All those in favor? Passes 7-0. Next is order 105-
Point of order. Did you open up the public hearing?
No. I told you, I'm out of practice. Is there anybody here that would like to speak out against a great free festival that's going to be held at Festival Plaza in Auburn on September 9th, 2023? And yes, that's also the same weekend as the Greek Festival. Get your euros, okay? Go over there in the baklava, and then come and enjoy the Blues and Brews. Nobody? Nobody? Okay, I'm going to ask for a vote then. All those in favor of the Blues and Brews Festival? Mass Gathering, approve, 7-0. Order, next, order 105-0807-2023, allocating funds, $50,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, for the Ameri- Auburn Victory Garden Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, man, we got Councilor Gary on the motion. We got second was Councilor Haas. Open this up to the public for comment. I think it was Haas. Okay. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak about the Victory Garden Program? Remember, this is, we did a pilot, I proposed this several months ago, $25,000. We gave all that money away, and then someone had a pretty significant waiting list. I think by allocating this $50,000, we'll have a lot more time for Glenn and Zach to take some learnings from the first rollout, make it better, get it into more people's hands, and also people will have a pretty significant heads up so they can apply and start thinking about their backyard garden. Any comments? Debate? Councilor Gary, then Councilor Staples.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too think this was a very worthwhile program. I'd like to know more about the $5,000 grants, but in my process for looking for more monies and funding, I've come across this, this organization called Seed Money. It's a national, I mean, statewide, countrywide program that's trying to promote community gardens and the whole nine yards. I sent Glenn the information because this would help us, because he knows more about grant writing, get even more money and a bigger bang for a buck, and to get more people involved, and to help even do more gardens around the city of Auburn.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Staples?
Yeah, I think this is a great program. I think that one way to promote this would be really nice to see maybe our communications director or even the ag subcommittee of the SNRB to go around and ask the people that got in on the first round of funding to share some photos and some ideas on how they might have been able to make use of those funds, to give maybe some ideas to people on what they might be able to do with this round of funds.
Okay. Any other comments? Both great. Okay, ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor of the appropriation, please raise your hand. Opposed, I'm being passed 7-0. Next is order 106-0807-2023. This is adopting the school maintenance labor contract. Do I have a motion?
Assumed.
Second.
Me, Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Moore. Open this up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak about this? This is in relation to the work we've been doing, and mind you, it's been going on for five years, okay, to finally start getting some efficiency, economy of scale. I got to give a thank you and a big atta boy and girl out to all the people involved in this on the city of Auburn side and the school department side. This is going to pay significant dividends for the taxpayers of Auburn, but more importantly, make sure that our key assets that we've spent a lot of money on actually are maintained properly for the next 100 years. So thank you for that. It's a long time coming. Any other comments? Debate? Anybody from the public? None being asked for a vote. All those in favor? Passes 7-0. Next, order 107-0807-2023, authorizing the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport Board of Directors to designate and sell surplus personal property. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilor Walker, do I have a second? Second, Councilor Whiting. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? Please step up to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing none, this is, you might have read the article, the newspaper, we've got a lot of surplus or abandoned, you know, property from a former tenant of the airport, or we're going to sell it. Any questions? None? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anything that we could use that we wouldn't have to pay a huge price for and get it at a discount?
Mr. Labonte, I see the audience trying to avoid our stairs. Please step forward if you can answer the question. I'm not sure if you can or not. Whatever you want. Pick it.
Councilor Gary, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think there are some items that we've heard from Jonathan Labonte, Chair of the Airport Board, just for, sorry. We have heard, and I think staff are looking at that. So what the order before you is not necessarily tied to what we're selling from Elite Airways. It's, there's, there are a number of assets around the airport that either are not utilized or do not need to be utilized as part of the turnaround at the airport. And this blanket authorization, the interlocal agreement says anything that's going to be sold worth more than $1,000 has to come to the two councils. This gives the board between now and the end of the year a chance to inventory and try to sell things and generate some short-term cash. So in the case of that and the auction we're running, we'll take any and all bidders through August 14th at, I think, 11:00 a.m. So bid early and often, all departments who have budgetary resources. We'll put it to good use.
May I ask another question, please? Does this pertain also to land around the airport?
No.
Great.
So the interlocal agreement has a requirement for land as well as personal property. So this is just personal property and would still require the board to authorize any of those sales.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Labonte? If not, I'm going to ask for a vote. Thank you, sir. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, 7-0 passes. Yeah, it might be. Next is order 108-0807-2023, amending the loan between the city's general fund and the Auburn-Lewiston Municipal Airport to extend the maturity from 2034 to 2036. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Haas, second from Councilor Walker. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, any debate? None being, I'll ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor? Passes 7-0. Next is order 109-0807-2023, approving the liquor license for Gipper Sports Grill LLC, located at 120 Centre Street in Auburn there, under new ownership. This is a public hearing and vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Walker, second from Councilor Moore. Anybody in the public like to speak on this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Council, no debate? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Passes 7-0. Last open session of the night is next on the agenda. Any member of the public that would like to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium, give us your name, address. If you could let me hear comments to approximately, bless you, three minutes. None being, bring it back. Reports. I have no reports. I already gave mine on the school board. The only, actually, the last report, I'm sorry, I have here, we did hold a very, very successful accessory dwelling unit, meeting, conference, if you would, with over 90 people in attendance. Thank you very much to Zach and Glenn for helping set this up, and John Blay from permitting was there speaking. We had members of Department of Economic Community Development were there. We had corporate representation from backyard ADUs. I spoke a little bit about tax and plans, but we had over 90 people that are interested in building ADUs, a vast majority of which were from Auburn. Looking at all of our financial incentives and programs that are available right now, I think it's going to be, we're going to see some very rapid movement in addition to what we already saw and were talked about just earlier tonight. Unfortunately, that was also the night of the big storm event, so during our intermission, halfway through, everybody got alerted on their cell phone, and we lost about half the people in attendance, but we do have their information. So that's the only report I have on that. Anybody else with a report? We'll just open it up so we can move along. Councilor Staples?
Yeah, sure. I went to the community conversation that was here, I think it was last week, that the planning and permitting office did on zoning. It was well-attended, and I want to thank Eric and Catherine for that presentation.
Any other reports from committees?
Yep. I wanted to report that the ad hoc committee on Lake Auburn, which is two from Auburn Water District, two from the city of Auburn, two from Lewiston, that went very well, and the things seemed to be, things seemed to be, everybody's on the same page and wanting to accomplish the same things. And, and so we're hoping that that continues. We've got another one scheduled for the end of August. But Kevin Gagnon was there, Mike Broadbent, myself from the Water District, and Eric and John Blaze, and Tracy from Lewiston, and the city councillor was not there, but we're hoping that he can attend next time. But that's the, the main drinking water program agrees with everything that we're doing, where we've submitted things. They like what we're doing. We're hoping that there's a final agreement with, from them on, on what's happening.
Have we been protecting Lake Auburn?
It appears. It appears so.
That's outstanding. Mr. Manager, or actually, any more counselors? Any other reports? None? Manager?
Just one last thing, thanks. The Absolutely Auburn is the new podcast for the city of Auburn. I encourage you, there are two podcast episodes that are currently available. The third one is being edited now. Go to our website, auburnmain.gov. The link is right on the front page. Encourage people, if you want to hear more about what's going on within the city, link on that. First podcast was with Brian and myself, so hopefully you enjoy that. We had a great conversation. I think the team is doing just a tremendous job with the podcast, and I think the public will enjoy it. We'll bring new, other guests on as we, as we roll this out, but we, we look forward to providing this to the community.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have two executive sessions. Actually, excuse me, one executive session, and then we're going to go straight into adjournment. No actions to follow from this executive session. The executive session is economic development pursuant to one MRSA 4056C, which premature disclosure would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the city. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Walker, second from Councilor Moore. All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? Okay, we are now in executive session with no further action. Have a very wonderful-